Have a roll call, please.
Johnson?
Here.
James?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Simon?
Here.
Can we all stand for the pleasurable allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mark, the agenda, were you adding or are you good?
No changes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The minutes from the October sixth meeting were sent to us via email. Are there questions about those minutes? We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
And there's a second. Questions, additions, corrections, anyone? Hearing none, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Suppose the same, no special order? This is a new category that Mark and I came up with. I think it's a very good category called informational update. It means you're just gonna hear information. And who's gonna lead that one? Mark, you lead. What do we talk about here?
Sure. Mayor, if it's okay with you, we'll have Fire Chief Steve Schroeder talk to us a bit about the administrative fire captain position that would be new position for the city of Big Rapids.
Alright, good evening, commission. Yeah, so informational update, kinda new to the structure of it. So I'll give you an oversight and then feel free to ask some questions on that. But yeah, we're looking to add administrative fire captain to our full-time roster. So administrative fire captain is going to be a forty-hour work week, mainly working daytime staff hours, which also is the busiest time statistically for us for calls. So we're looking to utilize this position in multiple different areas to be a administrative support and some of the administrative roles for myself. Also to do some of our fire inspection, code enforcement type of things that we need to work with community development on and plan inspections, things like that, as well as scene response. So as a captain of the fire department, they're still able to go and run command and things like that. One of the concerns I have is in my absence, you know, we have fire captains on scene. What happens if one of those captains is off as well? This individual would also be able to serve in a command role on scenes and have that background as well. So kinda multi-tiered position that can help us out wherever we may need it. I also, like I said, see where our calls for service continue to go up. I can tell you when I came in, in twenty fourteen, we were running just right around a thousand calls for service and we're probably gonna be over two thousand this year. So almost doubling calls for service, which again statistically during the day, I'm hoping to be able to utilize this position for scene response as well.
When you merged with the township, you, even if you were first time seen, you don't get credit for that call, is that correct?
For, well, credit.
In the past.
So credit is in like for medical or?
No, numbers, numbers.
Oh, and numbers. We still did count that as a scene response.
You did?
So, yep, yeah, it was still part of our numbers as well.
So they'd have, they counted and then you'd count it, same one was counted.
Yeah, but and the increase we had from them mainly was the additional medical calls that we were running. You know, that we normally wouldn't have been dispatched to had they had personnel available for that call.
And how much are those up?
Yeah, so and I appreciate you bringing that up because I meant to say that. So the numbers for Big Rapids Township were right around, I believe it was four twenty-six, last time I was here to update the commission and Big Rapids Township Board. So, so that's added to it, but I can also tell you our primary jurisdiction is also added to our runs, so. And I've been asked several times and look at trends as to why and unfortunately can't give you a good answer to that because it's across the board.
Questions from the commission first?
How many captains do you have right now? Forgive me for not knowing.
Oh, you're fine. Yeah, so currently we have three fire captains. So we have three shifts of three firefighters. So and they rotate around, work a twenty-four hour shift. So each shift is overseen by a captain. So this would be a fourth captain.
Is the captain part of the collective bargaining agreement or is that?
Yes. Yep, the captains are.
Would this new position be part of the collective bargaining?
We are planning on it being part of that, yep.
Okay.
Who makes the final decision on that? Being part of the union?
We're working with Mr. Gifford on that and we were discussing it.
So between you two, you can just kinda battle it out and come up with a solution?
And, and staff, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's been a collective discussion.
Yeah, there was, I think, a push from the rank and file at the, at the fire department. I don't think that's unfair to say that they wanted it to be a, a union role. And, you know, being another one of the captains, I think it fits probably best that way.
And they, they did, in the negotiating team and the, from the bargaining unit, they did also look at some other departments and their structure and, and most departments, the chief officer's the only one out of the bargaining unit. And the way they explained it to me was because of IDLH, so immediately dangerous to life and health atmospheres, so that all those positions that are expected to go into those have bargaining rights.
So when do you anticipate filling that role?
We're, we're closing, we, we were accepting letters of interest up till today. So we'll compile that, work with Jamie on, in HR and we'll see where we go from there. So soon.
Who picks that administrative captain? Is there a team of people or just you or Mark, you and whoever?
Yeah, it'll be me selecting it, you know, and I'll talk to Mr. Gifford, of course, but, yeah.
Where's it being funded out of?
We did budget for it this year.
Okay.
So it is already in the budget.
Okay.
General funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, does the police department do it differently where? Forgive me because I, I don't know the ranks, but are, are their officers also, if they're an officer, they're all part of the collective bargaining agreement? Or do they also have some administration folks?
Yeah, their sergeants are also part of a collective bargaining.
Okay, alright.
Well, that's the equivalent of captain of fire is sergeant.
It is, yep.
And how about our associate chief? Is he in the union?
No, he's not. He's not bargaining.
Yeah.
Yeah, the better term is not bargaining.
Yeah.
But the associate chief of? You're referring to police.
But he's not. Okay. Any questions?
Any other questions?
From the audience, please.
First, Steve.
Hearing none. Thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you.
It's not a voter boy bill. I just thought we should all know that we're gonna have that person on over here shortly. Study sessions, strategic planning, Michelle Stinger. We had asked in the past that we have updates from Michelle on the strategic plan and how it's going and she did that. Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, so in your packet you kind of have a table of the twenty-four, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five strategic plan. I'm just gonna do highlights, things we've completed since spring as the student packet. PR recently created a community events page. We've done promos on the radio in a two-week rotation. We've done a lot of sidewalk work, especially around the schools. We did, we continued to expand our CIP to try to do more outreach with it. And we also did a good neighbor day to try to do some community involvement. Things we started on that are mostly found in the twenty twenty-five strategic plan, but we haven't completed yet are starting with zoning ordinance amendments, looking at redoing the zoning ordinance. We are working on a grant right now to do some east side redevelopment and do some planning for that. And we also have started working on trying to figure out a way to, when staff goes and does continuing education, to pass that information on to different boards so that the boards are staying updated on what staff is learning. And then that's really all I have.
And you all are working on zoning, I see.
Zoning, yes. We're working on updating our zoning ordinance, which covers a lot of stuff in the strategic plan, especially regarding housing and things of that nature. A lot of those things fall under the zoning ordinance.
I'm just gonna recommend that each, I know Karen knows this well, but each of us should attend one of those just for a drill treat. It's brutal.
They're also. They're also available on the YouTube page.
Oh, you, they record those, the zoning ones?
Oh, I thought we did.
I don't think so.
Okay, alright. I'm sorry, I thought we did.
It, it's just would be an interesting thing to attend.
It is, is very interesting and cumbersome to go through.
Like the definition of a family took a long time today.
Can you define a family?
No. It's not what I thought. It was a mind, pardon the kids. That doesn't go. Anyway, thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Everybody should attend one of those. Public comment not related to agenda items, please. Bill?
Still curious about the streetlights going up the hill, Sweet Hill. Any plans for that?
It's in the, it's budgeted. It's gonna take a few years to get the budget to where it'll pay for them, but it's there.
The east side is also a part of our grant that we're, like, we're looking actively for a lot of grants to develop that east side, including on the north side, not just on the south side.
I won't ask anymore.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe.
It's in the budget. I think it was a hundred thousand last year, hundred this year again.
I think we've done one, one hundred thou, one year of a hundred thousand. And I think it's three or four or five, I don't, I don't remember, but it's, it takes a number of years to find, I know that.
You're three hours.
Oh, yeah, I, I believe it.
Wendy, anything today? Mrs. Jennings, anything today? I guess we hit everybody then. Todd, you got anything today, Todd?
On the agenda already.
I find these meetings much better than other meetings I attend.
I'm only hearing general.
What meetings?
General business, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a state and local cybersecurity grant. Megan, Mark, go ahead.
Yes, Megan Epley has, does a wonderful job for the city and I passed on to the commission a grant update. I am gonna have her at a commission meeting. I think we talked about December, but. Aside from that, she has always actively looking and pursuing grants that'll benefit the city of Big Rapids and found one in our cybersecurity field, ten thousand dollars to do an assessment of vulnerabilities that the city might have, so, and no match, no match to this grant. So I just applaud her hard work. There's contractors through the, the MyDeal state, the, or the state's MyDeal program that we can use to do this.
So that'll be a bid process for that one?
It would. If it, if it's over seventy-five hundred dollars, it's.
You'll have to bid for that.
Even though it's part of the MyDeal.
You can purchase through MyDeal or, and other programs, but regardless whether it's bid or not, would always come to the city commission to award.
Which is, I think, one of the things that the charter commission might be looking at in increasing that dollar amount. But especially if it's through like MyDeal, that's already structured contract pricing. To get three different quotes from MyDeal is kind of not necessary, so.
So do I have a motion for the resolution authorizing the acceptance of the cybersecurity grant?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Who will spearhead that? Will, Tim?
Tim, yes. He's our go-to on all things IT.
Very good. Please call the question.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Dan. It worked.
The usual, every year we do the snow removal services quotes. Mark, anything there? They look the same as.
They are. The only difference is we historically have had two contractors bid and this year we had one, Morningstar. Many years that Smucker does it as well, chose not to this year, so. We'll be relying on Morningstar if we get a big snowfall to help us out.
Very good. Is there a motion for the resolution accepting the bid for snow removal services?
So moved.
Second.
And questions? Could you call it, please?
Johnson?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Next is a resolution accepting the proposal from police in Vannan Brink for a Michigan Avenue culvert fish pass, fish passage study. This is Mark's all the way. He's gonna explain that to us all. Fish have to pass.
There is a benefit and a need for upward and downward movement within the stream for all things fish.
Mitchell Creek, we're talking here, right?
Right, at Mitchell Creek, at Michigan Avenue, the culvert sits higher than the bed of the stream and so things are stopped. They can't move, they can't have that natural movement up and down the stream. They can, up mainly, they could, in theory, come down. We got a grant through the Fremont Foundation Ice Mountain Stewardship Fund for thirteen thousand dollars to assess whether or not it's even possible to do work within the stream to eliminate this barrier. And so we have a proposal from police in Vanderbrink. They're gonna work with Marty Holmgren, which we're very familiar with. If the commission sees fit to award this, to design a system or analyze the design of a system to whether or not it can even feasibility or feasibly be done to raise the stream so that the barrier doesn't exist. Because you can't take out the culvert, it's too expensive. Someday that'll happen, I suppose. But there may be a way to raise the streams with a series of pools that will allow that movement up and down. So that's what we have here tonight. That's the proposal, but happy to answer any questions.
Is the watershed involved? It's a Michigan River watershed?
They're aware, I'm not really involved. I, I mean.
Are they still active?
Oh, yeah, very much so.
Very, okay.
Got something in the mail from them.
So fish from the Muskegon River can't get up to?
They're stopped at Michigan Avenue, yeah.
And they want to?
Oh, they would, very much so. In the summers, when the water's warm in the river, they would seek out cold water. Trout would. Other things would.
So.
Berbait.
Todd's, we'll study that and then at the same time, Todd, do you also give us a possible cost estimate on something like that? I mean, I, I mean, why studied if you, if, if we're not gonna act on it or if the city has?
Yeah, the.
I'm a little lost on that part.
We're gonna study options to, to improve wildlife passage up the stream. And a part of that would include a cost estimate of what we would consider a recommended alternative.
And who is that person that you're speaking to, Mark?
Marty Holmgren is a fisheries, I think he's a fisheries biologist. He used to run the Muskegon River watershed. He used to be Paul Hahn, if you're familiar.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was Marty for years while he doesn't do it anymore. I know he's involved in the Bring Back the Rapids project in, in Grand Rapids. He does fisheries work around the state, but he's familiar with our, with our area and for him, he used to work on campus, so.
So is he private consultant?
Yes.
So the fee to him will come out of that thirteen that fleas.
Yeah, he'd be a subcontractor.
Subcontractor to us. So we have a, a proposal in front of you to do some survey work so that we have the, the information to, to look at the different options. We're also gonna bring in the Eagle and DNR at an earlier stage, at this stage. And basically it's like, here's what we're looking at, you know, is this, is this even feasible? And try and get a heads up on, because the next step would be able, would be to go in full design and then permitting for the proposed improvements.
I have to assume there's lots of grants available for this kind of thing?
We applied for another grant through the DNR and what they responded to us is we're not really interested in funding any real studies. If you're interested in a project to do the work, yeah, come back to us.
I see.
So I think there's, you know, obviously, just as you're pointing out, Mayor, it depends on the scale. If it's a multimillion dollar project, probably won't go anywhere. If it's something, you know, more feasible, I, I know, I believe there'll be grant funding that could be achieved.
Go ahead. Questions, further questions for either Todd or Mark?
What's the role that Marty will have? Like, what is Marty doing and what is police doing?
Marty's got the background in fish passage, how they move, what they need to go upstream. And so with his expertise in that area, he can make recommendations on, is it stilling pools or rapids or what sort of treatment could be done with his expertise in that? More the wildlife side. We're more on the technical side. So getting the survey, once we look at that, you know, what do the elevations need to be? How many steps and if it's a stilling pools or, you know, what the gradient of the river needs to be? The permitting side of, you know, how do we get this through?
Budget pricing, I assume, would be through.
Uh, we would work with Marty on that too, just based on his background of similar type projects.
Does Ferris have programs in this kind of thing? Does Ferris State have programs? This would be a great college.
I don't believe they do anymore, no. Because the Muskegon watershed, I think, used to be under the umbrella of Ferris. But that was years and years ago. And don't quote me on that, I.
Alright.
Further questions from the audience?
Just moving forward, anytime you have a subconsultant, I'd like to see that broken out as a separate line item in your proposal. Not necessary for this, but in the future, you've got consultants.
Mayor, I asked, you asked me a question that I asked right at the be, sort of beginning of this is, can't you just cut a channel or, or, you know, can't you just?
Like a cement side joint, come on path through.
I, I asked the same thing.
Beaver dams or something like that, that honestly, you're not supposed to do it, right?
The bridge up there?
Yeah, there was a str, what I was told at the time when I asked that question is that there's, that floor of the culvert, I guess, is a structurally, it would, it would make it so there was, you know, it was, it was less vulnerable.
Less stability.
Right, less stability in the culvert.
Oh, you're talking about cutting through the culvert?
Yes.
Yeah, that, the culvert's designed as a box unit, so it's a structural, you cut the floor out of it, you're gonna.
Speed the waters?
You're gonna cause problems with the integrity of the culvert.
Right, I just was, the mayor asked that question earlier.
Scour, undermining and such.
Okay. What, do I hear a motion for the resolution to hire fleas in Vannan Brink to do a study on culvert fish pass?
So moved.
Second.
Further? Question, please?
Rhodes?
Yes.
Simon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Todd, you're up next on a resolution accepting a proposal from police in Vannan Brink for the replacement of the Fuller Avenue water main. And I, I just, that main has given you trouble forever, has it, Mark?
Oh, yeah, yes.
It's just really old?
Uh, it's materials, maybe, maybe, yes. I think it's old and.
How far out are we going?
It goes to Esqot, Esqot back to the pump station, I think.
Uh, to, to State, but.
Yeah.
Ties into the South State Water Main project at, near the tower.
Yeah.
So the, the South State project, we plan on bringing the twelve-inch across State Street directional bore. And then this project would continue from that point to.
So the line that there's an eight inch?
Correct.
Why would you need a twelve? It's all just residential homes along there.
It pumps to the tower.
We're looking at the tower.
Oh, you're gonna connect it to the tower?
Eventually it will connect to the tower, but as part of the whole hydraulic model or the hydraulic system in the city, twelve inches proposed in that area to four.
So right now it doesn't connect to anything?
The pump station at the water tower near, near Subway, the State Street water tower, you know, feeds the.
Right.
Up the pressure district, right? And so that pump station directly connects to the one on water tower. I mean, that line, you know, that would be the biggest avenue. I'm sure there's other connections, but that would be a direct way to fill that tower. And we have historically had some issues with filling in that area. And it's had, I think, a dozen breaks on it over, I mean, it has broke a number of times.
And that would be funded out of that big project. Will that be a water?
The water, out of the water system finances.
We're using all that to make the tower to tower when this spring.
That's a different project. We're just gonna tie in.
Money, money comes from the water fund.
Yes, but the, the South Street project has the grant associated with it, so it's, we draw the line at that point to.
Which is why you can't bid them both together.
What's that?
Which is why you can't bid them both together.
Correct.
Which is, I think, what you were alluding to.
It's a lot of money all of a sudden be needed. So you're, when you're talking about doing this one?
Next year?
This is coming summer?
Yes.
Same time we're doing the tower to tower? Got a lot of money in there in that fund, probably, huh?
We've been budgeting for this work.
Oh, this one has?
For, I mean, we budgeted for the original bore job three, four years ago. I mean, we've been doing this planning to be prepared to be able to fund that and other things.
Do you know what the budget cost is for the, obviously we know what it is for engineering, but.
I, I don't have a tip of my tongue, no. I can get, I'll get that to you.
The cost of the big one, tower to tower doubled?
Five point five million is the estimated cost.
About doubled in three years, right? I mean, the price.
Well, it doubled, yeah, yeah. I don't know if it doubled in three years. It doubled at some point because we bid this out two years ago or maybe three years ago and it was double our estimate then.
That was.
If it's doubled from then, I think we have big issues. I, I don't think that's the case. I think it went up with all of the inflation of COVID times, there was a doubling is what you're referring to.
That's what I'm referring to, yeah.
Right now, I don't, I certainly hope when we go out to bid for that big bore project that it's not double what it was before because our previous bid was five million. If it goes to ten million, it's, it's just not.
We're not gonna ever.
Yeah, it's not possible without some level of borrowing or something, which I don't think the commission's too interested in. But our grant is for two point five million, the CDBG grant that Megan was able to, to get for that project. And we budgeted for the last three years to do it. This is more routine type work than that. I wanna say it was a five hundred thousand dollar project. I don't.
Yeah, how many blocks is it from Esqot to State?
Probably four.
Yeah.
That'd be, that would be my guess. It's about four, I think. Maybe it's.
Long blocks.
Longer ones, yeah.
Anything else, Todd, on that bid?
No, there's questions.
Questions from anybody? Esqot to State Street. Is there a motion for the resolution accepting the proposal from fleas for the replacement of the Fuller Avenue water main?
So moved.
Second.
Further questions? Hearing none?
Simon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark, where do you, where do you all, do you have like a total game plan for the next ten years on water?
I do, yeah. Our CIP document would be our, our go-to on that, yes. We would have a plan for projects out six years. Our CIP runs six years. We would go out that far.
Unscheduled business. I just had one quick thing. On Wednesday night, a community volunteer did a program on The Anxious Generation, which is a book that talks about use of screens in children. And she brought in some excellent speakers and we had, but we didn't get any parents. So there were a bunch of experts and parents who have little kids that come through. If you wanna spread the word, she's having one more of those in November and.
November eleventh. November eleventh.
The speakers were excellent. It was so informative, but there were a lot of people like me, grandpas in there, you know, and our kids are already parents, so. I'm just throwing something out for the community to get interested in that. When you hear the incidents of suicide, mental illness and everything from bullying on the internet and all that stuff, it was really sad but interesting.
Mayor, did you say that was this past Wednesday?
Yeah.
That was parent-teacher conference for Big Rapids school, so that's probably when nobody showed up.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know anything about that. It's just sad. It was sad. She had good experts. Other unscheduled business? Please.
I thought we were going to discuss the contract for the fireworks.
Oh, we were gonna, we talked about it. The fireworks company wants a contract for fireworks. We weren't so keen to sign us the city to do that again this year. We wanted an outside group to take over and it didn't materialize so far. So the person called, I, I'll, you speak for you, Steve. You're the owner, told us. He called you and said, aren't you signing up or what?
Yeah, so paratechnico representative Michael, he called me up and he said, hey, I have you penciled it. I heard, but there's a lot of other communities that really want that date, so you really need to make a decision very soon. And that was a week ago-ish, so.
So it's the third, not the fourth?
Correct. So there's a lot of communities right now that have the fourth because it's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary Declaration of Independence signing, so a lot of communities. Declaration of Independence signing, so a lot of community, communities are celebrating. So, uh. Need to get on board or?
And I know Amanda has strong feelings on this one.
Yeah, my feelings are that it's a, it's a beautiful, expensive thing to do. Um, and there's a lot of other community wellbeing things that might have longer lasting impact that I would like to see the dollars spent on. But nobody can really argue with the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of a country's kind of day.
Last time Mark took it on, the, the city did sign the contract, which includes almost twenty five thousand dollars. But Mark and his team fundraised at least twenty thousand of it privately. So it, it didn't end up being a hit to the city. Now, here it is again, and he wants a contract signed. I mean, I, I thought maybe Lorraine would just sign it as a.
Mayor.
She didn't think much of it earlier.
Are you, are, are you wanting to do a check in to see how each of us?
Yes.
Feels a year later or whatever?
That's what.
We're here for right this moment.
I have a question, is there a deposit required with signing the contract?
I believe so, I don't know off the top of my head.
There is.
And for sure, the fourth is not even an option anymore.
It's not an option, no.
And remind me, when we did it last year, we weren't even on the third, we were like.
First we were the fifth and then, um, it opened up the third and I said, let's get it to the.
Yeah. I agree with Commissioner Johnson, um, and I feel like. Nothing's happened in a year to change how the fireworks are being handled. And I would hate to see us not have a celebration. Or leave it up to the last minute, the way it was last year.
Please go ahead.
Okay. My question is, is this the only entity that does these fireworks? And I know this is the one we've partnered with, I think, for the past however many years, but.
From, from what Pyrotechnico said, um, there's only maybe a handful. Like, there's not a lot of big firework companies in Michigan that, that do this type of stuff.
So.
Very few.
I, they, they've done a long time. They've done it prior to whenever the city was involved.
Just thinking from a perspective of the expense and the fact that the city would be taking on the expense and that for larger purchases. We generally try to go out to bid, which is not what I'm suggesting we do, but I'm just kind of introducing it to the conversation that. You know, it's a two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, but if this happens a third time, I think it would be very, um. Helpful for me as a commissioner to have more than one price to go off of. I support that one hundred percent.
David, do you think? It's a hard one, um. I, I agree that it's hard to say no, especially two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, but part of me also feels like. The company might be strong arming this a little bit, um, that's what it feels like, a little strong arming, little, you know, hey, this is, you, you know, you, they kind of. Got us by the, you know, and so here's what you gotta do. And so. Um, but I agree that, yeah, you can't, you cannot have fireworks this year. I mean, of all years, it's not the year to not have them. But it's also hard to, yeah, cuz it's, it feels like you're kind of strong arming us a little bit.
Anything, Lorraine? Please.
Have you checked with the C B B, the new director?
I've, I have talked to her about it recently, uh, not in any commitment level way.
She mentioned that when I was talking to her.
Yeah, I, I bring, I bring it up frequently.
Well, she mentioned something about doing the fireworks, just kind of a in passing comment, so that's why I was wondering.
I asked her about it, but.
I think that probably the city should not sign the contract. It's very difficult to fundraise, for Mark to fundraise with people he has to. Take complaints from and do this from and that, it's, it's kind of messy. If you give me enough of the fireworks, maybe I'll pass your dumpster problem, Mark.
Isn't that why you reach out to the townships in the county the most, Mayor? Isn't that why you?
So, I, I, I'd be fine with just letting it sit and in the next three days, we'll have an answer somehow.
Mayor, I asked Steve to prepare a bid document to go out and, and have it back in November. Um, that's where we're at, at the moment. We can stop doing that. I mean, if that's your discretion, however you want us to handle it.
I just don't like the city being involved with that part.
I understand that too.
I don't know, then what are you?
So what are we waiting for?
I think that probably there could be a group of. Citizens who would be willing to sign the contract, but we'd, but. Fundraising would have to occur, they wouldn't absorb twenty five thousand, but we managed last year to come up with it, I think. You know, please, I mean, we got Micah Myers and those, yeah, jeez.
Are you, are you, um, nominating yourself for the election?
The city not do anything.
That's where you're at with it?
That's where I am.
You're not doing anything.
Cuz it's, if we say yes again, it's just gonna happen. Every year from now on in the city, you'll have to do the fireworks. You can just feel it coming. Ah, Rosie's gotta come in. Please, what's the cost for the program?
Twenty five thousand.
Rosemary.
I've not spoken lately, but I'm gonna speak on this one because I think the city should do it, I'm sorry. It's a. Activity that is done in good faith, it's an activity for all ages of people to enjoy. Everybody, your seniors, your, your parents, your kids, right on down. And I think the city has to have something for the people, especially. On the Fourth of July, and I sure would hate to see you miss that third. Go off for volunteers. I gave you a check last year for it. Nothing like some people can give, but. I'm sure there's people out there that would, uh. Chip in. You had good results last year and then. That's my say, I think, I think it should be for the good of the community, but that's me.
If the third or fourth are taken, you can also do July second because that is the actual date the vote was taken to make us.
Mayor, what if we?
The actual vote for independence is July second.
We ask for the public, someone to come forward to volunteer to be the fundraising organizer for the fireworks. What if we asked the community, is there anyone that wants to come forward and take charge of this fundraising? Here's opportunities, it, it takes it out of Mark's roles and responsibility and. You know, we have, they know they have the backing of the city to cover the cost, but they are taking the onus on of. Fundraising, that's one option. I don't know if it makes you see it any differently, but.
It's a downtown business authority. They, they said anything? Cause everybody's broke.
Last year, the township was probably our biggest giver.
Big Rapid Township gave five thousand dollars.
They were very generous.
Did the downtown businesses?
Downtown.
Did the E B A, did the E B A contribute anything?
I'd have to look back, I don't think so.
I know they're struggling a lot of it.
Yeah, but. Mayor, how about i- if I suggest?
Sure.
We move ahead with the bids. And, and I, I gave, uh, uh, my idea was, yeah, well, let's see what other companies are out there. Although we've done very well with Pyrotechnico, have nothing against them, but this should be, if it's a city done project, it should be bid. It's, it's well over the seventy five hundred dollar threshold and we could get a number for actually having the fireworks back on July fourth. Which we had for decades and we've been pushed off. And so through the bid process, they can either say they can do it on July fourth or they can't. And it could be Pyrotechnico or it could be somebody else. There are other companies that do it. And uh, and that flushes that all out, so you know exactly what you're dealing with. The amounts, the dates, who is available and uh, and then we can come back to you with that. Is that helpful to you in this process or?
It at least moves us forward. The bid is, who's taking it over?
Yeah, I, I just, it just might be helpful to you to know who, how much you're talking about exactly.
From my perspective, I think that would be useful, whether we take on control of the fireworks or a community member does. You know, we're in a position where we can go and request those bids and get that response back. A private citizen may not get a response. Um, in the same way or fashion that we would. And then it, it gives whoever's assisting or fundraising or paying for it outright. Kind of knowledge, kind of, if we are passing this on to somebody else to do, we're at least passing on assistance in doing it too.
City never did it until last year.
Doesn't it been two years in a row?
No, this is the first, th- this last one, and Mayor, you.
It's always been done by Lions Club or.
That's the problem though, the service organizations are, well, it's not, they don't have capacity, they're. They're, everybody's competing with each other from a service organization standpoint. And everyone has kids and families and sports and you can only spread yourself so thin.
There's no vote to take, so if he wants to do it, he'd do it. You tell him to do it. But if we find somebody to do it in the meantime, I would say accept their volunteer.
Oh, I would never, nah.
Could we include it in the next newsletter? Yeah.
I, I agree with Dave, this is not the year to not have it, so why don't you just do it this year and make a big splash at next year? Somebody else is gonna have to step up, just do it the way you've done it. People don't have to worry about trying to figure out how to get liability insurance, how to get permits, just, just do it.
I agree with Bill.
I agree with him.
If we do it again, we have to get bids. Cause last year we didn't get bids, we, that was probably against our, our charter.
Last year it was done as an emergency vote, I believe, because of the.
And when we all said, we don't wanna do this again.
And we actually wrote it down that we're not going to do this again. But it's the two hundred and fiftieth year.
Right.
And. I'm not insensitive to that personally.
You think any other business for the good of the organization, city?